I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chris, could you take the roll, please?
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Here.
Commissioner Baum? Commissioner Riley?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Greathop?
President.
Commissioner Tamia?
Here. Are there any additions or deletions to this evening's Human Services Agenda?
Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Our next item is for citizens to be heard. We have one citizen here tonight, Megan Kuhn. Ms. Megan, would you like to go up to the podium? Megan, if you could introduce yourself, and under our policies, you have three minutes.
All right, excellent. My name's Megan Kuhn. I'm here to speak on the Narcan proposal. I think that I'm a recovering addict, and I moved here a couple of years ago, and Narcan saved my life. I know that there's been discussion of trying to get that into some of the homes and things like that, and I actually have it in my home. I do think that it's something that could save a life, and that I don't think that for myself as an addict, I never thought that I would overdose. I never thought that I would do more to get that, but it happens, and I think that having that as a precautionary tool for families to use is huge and could definitely save lives. Today, I celebrate two years in recovery. I work at Community Mental Health here in St. Clair County. I have children. They are in the schools here, and I think that it would be an asset to our community. That's all I have.
Well, thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments very much. And also, congratulations on the anniversary of your sobriety. We've had some problems with that in my family, and I understand how important that is. So, thank you for coming and sharing your comments with us tonight. Next, do we have any updates tonight? Conceptual initiatives? Old business? The first new business item is 7A, the St. Clair County Community Mental Health Care Integration Program. Dr. Mercantat is here with us this evening. Dr. Mercantat?
Thank you, gentlemen. Yes, we have a big agenda, and thank you. So, the CMH grant is an opportunity for us to work more closely with Community Mental Health. They received a large grant to provide integrated healthcare with their clients, and our role is to provide preventive health screening that we currently do, as well as to support their educational commitment to this effort.
And my understanding of this is that there would be a community health facility opened at CMH's campus on Electric Avenue?
I think that is their goal, correct? People's Clinic is currently there, and I think the understanding is to develop that facility further to allow their clients to be seen there. That would be through the work with, excuse me, Lake Huron Medical Center and CMH.
Unfortunately, our reports still have a call.
It's very difficult to say, yes.
At St. Joseph Mercy, but yes, thank you. Are there any questions for Dr. Mercantat this evening? Thank you, Annette.
Okay.
I would make a motion, we send this on to the full board?
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the Region 10 Prepaid Inpatient Health Plan Grant Funding and an Adjustment to the Health Department Manning Table Request.
Correct. This is a great opportunity for the Health Department and for the county, I believe. It's through the regional PHIP, so it'll be some development in some of our other counties, but this allows our Health Department to bring on a full-time health educator, to develop solid coalition work and strategic planning for prescription drug abuse, as well as tobacco and safe date programming. There's no local match, and, you know, we're really excited about the ability to expand our resources.
Well, I'm personally pleased to see this because I think, as we all know, we get a report card from our administrator every year with our state of the county address. And in some of the areas, you know, in terms of quality of life with the parks and the libraries and everything, I think we're making progress. We're certainly making a lot of progress on the economic development measures, but I think we all know that there are issues in our county community concerning health, and plainly speaking, we have a lot of negative behaviors, addictions, violent behavior that really detract from our community and its attractiveness, both to our own residents and people who want to move here. And I think this type of program is a very good initiative to begin to address some of those issues. David?
Yeah, you could, just because people that are potentially watching can give a better explanation, because it looks like this has a lot of good potential for $246,000. Region 10 is not just St. Clair County.
Correct.
So, if you could give a brief rundown and a little bit more description of what that money's going to be used for?
So, we will be primarily building local coalitions, but it'll be built upon other initiatives that are being done throughout the region. We'll be sharing our best practices. There are some marketing strategies for marketing, especially for some of our prescription drug issues, that will be regionalized. It'll be the same marketing strategy throughout the whole region. So, this is a collaborative that'll be working with the other agencies, but our local initiative will really be pulling together local stakeholders to develop our strategic plan, because, you know, our responses have to be, you know, directed towards what we have here directly.
What is Region 10, though, all the communities?
Region 10 is Genesee, LaPierre, Santa Lact, and St. Clair.
Thank you.
So, right along the corridor.
Make a motion to send it out to the full board?
I support that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Another item from the Health Department is the Naxo loan. Grant and request for Health Department Manning Table Revision.
Correct. And this is the grant that the young lady spoke of. Naloxone is an opiate antagonist. It has no value other than reversing the life-threatening effects of an overdose of an opiate, and it's an evidence-based program that allows us to reduce immediately accidental overdose deaths, which is a driving factor of some of our poor health data in this county. It's a beginning step. I want to emphasize, I think this is the beginning of what we need to do as a community, but it's a very important first step.
Ms. Greathop? The, Dr. Mercantat, would you go into just a little bit more detail about this particular piece and how it's going to be used, and also talk just a little bit about who else has it out there on the streets, EMS, police, or fire, or anybody like that?
Correct. Well, first of all, Naloxone Rescue is a nationwide CDC-endorsed, SAMSA-endorsed program to reduce overdose deaths. Accidental overdose deaths now exceed accidental moving vehicle accidents as far as causes of death. It's a national epidemic, and our county has not been spared from it. The program itself, though, I think it'd be very nicely implemented through the Health Department, because we will provide not only the kits themselves, but the education about rehabilitation services, the signs and symptoms of overdose, what are the correct ways of responding to that, not just using the kit and then leaving, but calling 911. So, it's really a life-saving mechanism as far as engaging people who have an addiction. And we like to think of addiction as not as behavioral abnormality, but as a medical illness. You know, this is a true illness. And so, what we want to do is reach out on a therapeutic level and provide people with resources to get better. And I think that's real important. Now, the EMS, it is a statewide law now that all first responders carry Naloxone because of its evidence of life-saving qualities, and our EMS staff all carry this already.
I understand that there is absolutely no side effects or adverse effects if you give it to somebody who truly didn't need it.
That's correct.
If you mistakenly gave it to somebody who didn't need it, there's absolutely no...
It would do nothing.
Would do nothing.
Correct.
When I was reading this, it made me think about when AEDs were first rolled out, that, you know, everybody knew how to provide resuscitation, but the ability to have these portable machines like we have in our hallway here, if someone should be stricken, I look at this as the same kind of philosophy of really decentralizing and improving the time that someone can be treated with the AED.
Another analogy is the EpiPens for people who have anaphylactic reactions to allergies, and it is, it's an opportunity to give somebody a second chance at life. We don't hesitate to resuscitate overweight, smoking men with high blood pressure. They come in with a heart attack, we resuscitate them, and we hope to rehabilitate their other risk factors, you know, after they are saved, and this is very much the same approach.
David?
Just two things. One, you provided us with a lot of positive support, like in Macomb County. You gave us a lot of information. Looked like this is all just very good for the community. I just have one question, and of course, we have a lady here that asked, talked earlier. Is there any case of where somebody might use this as, well, now I can overdose, and this is going to save me? Just discussion.
Well, no, I appreciate you asking that, because that actually comes up a lot, and actually, the evidence does not support that. Naloxone causes an immediate withdrawal from the opiate, which is an exquisitely uncomfortable, unpleasant experience. So, in general, people who use opiates do not look to this as a savior, and by far, most of the evidence suggests it does the opposite. It reduces the consumption of opiates. It drives people into recovery, and it does not, and no, there's always, I'm sure, some aberrances where people might, you know, consider that, but as a whole, as a community at a population level, it does not seem to drive more opiate use at all.
I'd like to vote a motion forward this to the full board.
Support. Any other discussion?
Just, you know, to me, if a person were in that situation where they had to resort to this as a solution, it would be a tremendous wake-up call that they better start seeking help for their issues.
Any other comments? Do we have a motion, support? All those in favor?
Aye.
The last new business item we have, thank you, Dr. Mercantat. You've been a busy woman this month. The last item we have involves the Commission on Aging. The Commission on Aging is that body that the Board of Commissioners appoints to help administer the Counsel on Aging Services Millage. And what we have before us tonight is a request for a supplemental appropriation for this year for various programs that are provided by the Council on Aging and other aging agencies.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion that we approve this and send it on to the full board.
I'd support that.
Yes.
I'd like to talk about, if I could, just some of the things. These supplemental appropriations will go to the nutrition program for a replacement delivery vehicle for Council of Aging, as well as a home repair program, a replacement vehicle of $20,000, for a total of $75,017 to the Council on Aging. The Lakeshore Legal Aid, focus on senior housing issues, another $55,000. And to Blue Water Safe Horizon, for replacement of a commercial-grade flooring for $18,417.75. And electronic tablets with a one-year service plan for $855.19. The total request is $149,289.94.
Mr. Riley?
Well, if there was any kind of organization that I would certainly get behind and support, this would be one. I had the great opportunity to serve on that committee, and I want to tell you, they do a fantastic job, and for the good that they do through the community of delivering meals is just one little part of it. It's just absolutely, I think, a tremendous organization, and I would certainly support anything that they need.
It certainly goes a long way to doing a couple of things that are especially, I think, significant to senior citizens. One, it enables them to stay in their home for a longer period of time, and it makes sure that they're getting the proper nutrition to stay healthy, especially for those that need to participate in the various nutrition programs.
They even, the nice thing about them delivering meals, too, because I had the opportunity to do that, and Carl, I remember you doing it the same day, the nice thing about it was that you get to go to the house, you get to meet the people, but you also get to check on the people. And if they don't come to the door, there's a protocol of what you do as far as getting in law enforcement there to make sure they're not ill and can't respond or something. It's, that is one wonderful county organization we have, and I think it's just absolutely super, the way they handle things.
One of the things, I have followed Commissioner Riley and his assignments in Aging for the Board of Commissioners, and I've not only followed him as a representative on the Council on Aging, but now on the area agency board, and I was really surprised, looking at the seven counties that are involved, only two of the counties have a millage like we have here in St. Clair County, and we're really looked at as a model, even for Oakland, Macomb, and Wayne Counties.
I make a motion to forward this to the full board?
I think we have...
Oh, we already did?
Okay. No other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Are there any other human service matters to come before us this evening? We have nothing in terms of information only.
Mr. Chair, I'd move that we receive and file packets regarding human services matters.
Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
I move we adjourn.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to call to order the St. Clair County to chair a public safety committee, and have a roll call, please.
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Tamia?
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Here.
Commissioner Baum? Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Greathop?
Here.
Commissioner Riley?
Here.
First thing, additions, deletions, changes to the agenda. I see we have 2015 Marine Safety Program Grant Agreement Final Action.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the 2A, the Marine Safety Grant Program, become 7C under New Business.
Second?
Who would have supported to make that change? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair? Motion, we support the agenda?
Second?
Who would have supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're three, do we have any citizens to be heard? Okay. Next is Updates, Youth Readiness Council Update. Mr. Friedland?
Good evening. Back at the Emergency Services Breakfast, we announced the formation of the Youth Readiness Council. The council actually began their existence June 1st, and I'm in awe so far, but the structure of the program is we have five trustees, and those trustees are Kevin Miller, he's the Director of Administrative Services at RISA. We've got Jim Larson, the President of SEMCO. We've got Dave McEwen, Vice President, McLaren Port Huron. We've got Marty Dorn, who is the President of WGRT, and we have Commissioner Greathop. And those individuals are in place to get the doors open, if the doors are needed. If they're not needed, we may dwell on some of their expertise. For example, Dave McEwen presented how to develop a business plan to the kids for the projects. Mr. Larson's going to talk in a month or so on leadership and how to approach people so it's a learning experience. We also have six mentors that come to the meetings, and they represent government, they represent emergency services. We've got some business people on it. So, they're there, they're in contact with the kids all the time. So, rather than go any further, the meat of the program, the most important, is the council members itself. The council has a chair and a vice chair, and we have the council chair, Sarah Miller, here tonight, who would like to brief you on their activities, and I think you'd be well pleased.
Hi, everybody. All right. Okay, so I'm going to introduce you to the Youth Readiness Council. I'm the chairperson, Sarah Miller. The vice chair is Faith May. She's not here tonight, but hopefully you guys can meet her soon. Okay, so we're a council of 11 youths from around St. Clair County. We have some people as far as Algonac. We're all in 8th to 12th grade, and we also have our trustees and mentors that Jeff introduced to you. We meet monthly. Our current plans, we have about five projects that we're going to, actually, it's six now, that we're going to be enacting throughout the next year. Our target is going to be 7th graders to younger kids down to like pre-K. We feel like this age group is going to be the most receptive to our messages, because they like to tell their parents and friends about the things that they learn. I already mentioned the projects that I'll introduce to you guys and explain in the next couple of slides. We want to raise community awareness in emergency, and it'll help reduce the effects of disaster whatever strikes, because if people know what to do before a disaster happens and during the aftermath is a lot less bad. We want to make our activities fun and engaging for all the kids and people who participate, because hopefully, it'll make them want to participate, and then they'll take away valuable information. Okay, so we have a website video group, whose coordinator is right there, Michaela Cameron. She's in the back row. We have a Disaster Master Group, which is a Jeopardy! sale game. We've changed the name to Survival Rivals. We have a Firefighter Boot Camp, an obstacle course, and a carnival game. Our newest addition is Safety Town, which I will explain. It's a really cool idea. All right, so our website video group, they are going to try to engage all of the social media users. We're going to set up a website, and we're going to put all of our activities, events on that. They also are making videos all throughout this month, and they're going, because September is emergency awareness month, so they're going to let out a video each day, trying to engage people to watch, and they're going to feature a different aspect of emergency awareness every day, and they're about a minute long. The website features, they're going to introduce all of our council members, hopefully a video a week. They're going to have weekly questions about emergency preparedness. They're going to have links to our videos. They also want to put some on YouTube, so that's what those links would be for. Our weekly tips would also be featured in the videos, and they also would like a comment section, so people can give their feedback on our progress, and they also want a calendar event, so that you guys can all know when we're doing things, so come out and join us. They plan to use GoDaddy.com for a domain and Wix for building the website. They, through research, found that these are going to be the best for employing our strategies. The main target is teenagers for this project, but anybody can access these things. I already mentioned the YouTube page. So, all of the people on this group are going to be able to contribute, but everything will go through a main admin, so that the content is monitored, and there's no like grammar errors. The next group is Survival Rivals. This is a Jeopardy! style game. We're going to do it in schools. We're targeting 5th grade and 7th grade. What it is, is it's going to be emergency preparedness-based, and there's going to be questions that the kids will answer in teams of three. It will start within each school, every grade, 5th and 7th grade will have different competitions. So, there's going to be two winners for this whole thing. But it will start in the schools, and when there's a winner from each school, it'll move on to the district, and then there will be a whole, one final competition, in which the winner will receive a prize that's still being determined. The next thing we have is the Firefighter Boot Camp. This is going to be a one-to-two-day camp, full day, and they're trying to still decide on the activities, but we've had a lot of ideas, and it's just mainly about like how to be a firefighter and training you in case you are thinking about going into the field. So, some of our ideas include training with the hoses, how to deal with certain fires, CPR training, lots of hands-on activities, and a mock disaster. Our obstacle course group, we're designing and implementing an obstacle course that's going to represent emergencies that we might face any day. We are going to give prizes out to the winners, such as flashlights, emergency blankets, stuff like, that you could use in an emergency. Our carnival game, they are creating games about safety and preparedness. They're going to try to put these in school carnivals, and maybe at church fairs, wherever that they can get into. They are doing a beanbag toss and a ring toss, and they're going to use questions and answers so that the kids learn things while playing this game. So, if they throw a beanbag, it might have a question or an answer on it, and they have to throw it into the corresponding hole to set out a house fire, is our current plan. They're going to need paint, wood, tools, because they're planning on constructing everything themselves. The total cost for this project is going to be about $400, and us, as the council, is going to do the construction. All right, and Safety Town, this is our newest idea. It's super cool. This was actually brought to us by Faith May, the vice chair. It's a two-hour safety awareness program, and it's designed for kids, kindergarten to second. We construct a town, a mini-town, and it's going to have about six blocks in it, and we're going to teach them things such as riding a bike and wearing a helmet, crossing the streets safely, knowing what traffic colors and signs mean. We're also going to cover lessons like strangers, what to do if you're at home alone, how to react in a fire, what you should do around railroad tracks, safely being on the school bus, and like city buses, guns, and how to dial 911. If they're little, they might not know. But anybody can do this if they're trained. This can even be high schoolers like Michaela or myself. We can also use teachers, first responders. Every session, there will be six instructors and one coordinator, and it will be up to 36 children a session. We're going to try to do this in schools, churches, where any people might usually be coming to, where we could set it up. So, it's going to be portable, and this is our logo. That's all I have for you guys.
Anybody have questions for...
I just, I observed when Sarah started out, she started out a little bit slow, but as she got into it, you could see the fever beginning to build, this passion that she has for this, and it's the same passion I heard on the radio the other morning. Jeff Friedland was on the radio with a couple of other students, and they started out kind of a little bit nervous, and as they got going, they began to work together, and you could hear them back and forth, and they couldn't say enough things about the energy. So, I'm just assuming that the energy that you're showing tonight, and the energy that I heard on the radio, is exhibited in your group right now?
Yeah, we're really excited about everything.
Good to see that. Thank you for doing that.
And also, I didn't introduce Jeff Friedland. He is our leader, right in the green shirt, so.
Fearless leader?
Well, I don't know about that, but well, you know, you can't start safety awareness too young, and I think that's a great program when that was started, and I think it's, just judging what you're, as Bill said, about as you could progress... And I think it's, just judging your, as Bill said, about as you could progress through that, I could see that it's gonna, I'm really looking forward to the end of the year, see how we do. Because it looks like it's really turning all well.
Thank you.
Any other questions, please?
Just an observation. On occasion, you'll hear people complaining about our young people in our community. But when you see what you've been able to do in your group, I certainly go forward with a lot of confidence that our future is gonna be in good hands.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
Jeff, thank you for all your work into this. Okay, moving on, conceptual initiatives. Nothing, okay, old business. New business, for year, item A, for year 2016 Secondary Road Program Grant Application.
Mr. Chair, I move that the secondary road patrol grant application from the Michigan State Police be forwarded to the board.
Support.
Move to support, any comments?
Just a comment that this does not require any local match, so...
Right, excuse me. Okay. Motion?
It's made.
In support. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Item B, Animal Control Software Acquisition.
Mr. Chairman, I've moved that the animal control software acquisition be forwarded to the full board.
Second.
Move to support it?
I definitely look like a rundown.
But we're gonna hear it as you walk it up, I thought, don't turn around.
Yeah, I tried, sorry. As you know, when the Sheriff's Department went out to animal control, we had a lot of business to reorganize, make things right, a lot of things we needed to fix. Our biggest issue that we haven't been able to fix is the program that we're using, the software. Very unaccountable, very unstable with the audits. Our auditor every year makes comments, which we can't... Our IT program department, they can't fix the program to make it what we need it to do. We've done a couple comparables with other programs out there. The program that we're seeking, the reason why we're seeking it is because they are the only program out there that is gonna allow an internet portal to do a lot of business with the citizens through the internet. Buying their licenses, looking for their lost pets, adoptions, are looking for their lost cat, which is huge in our county. That's our biggest reason. And the second reason is the cost. And it does everything that we needed to do in the program. Right now, a lot of things are doing, we're doing it in the office, is handwritten. Everything is handwritten receipt. We're doing second, we're doing multiple entries into spreadsheets, the program. And then we're entered into spreadsheets and more spreadsheets. And as far as Freedom of Information Acts, we are, many man-hours go into that to fulfill one of those requests for a citizen that wants information. Through the Treasurer's Office, through our office, it's a lot of work. And this program here, everything's directly entered into the system. We're gonna run a report, here it is, within minutes. And all the data will be there, we'll support everything that we needed to do.
Understand this is coming out of the Tax Foreclosure Fund, correct?
Yes, yes, they're gonna do the Tax Foreclosure Fund. It's through a mutual agreement between the Sheriff's Department and the Treasurer's Office.
We have any comments or any questions? Okay, and then I'll take, you made a motion, but we gotta vote on the motion, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Thank you very much. Okay. Next, what's the matter? Oh, yeah. Okay, item C, the 2015 Marine Safety Program Grant Agreement. This will be for final action.
I'll make a motion to approve the grant agreement.
Support.
Move to support it, questions?
We need a roll call vote for this one then, right?
Yes.
We got a 25% match on it?
I'm sorry?
We've got a 25% match on this?
Yes.
Pardon?
On the state portion? Okay.
Okay, you want to do a roll call, please?
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Mr. Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitob?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes. Are there any other public safety matters? Bring forth. Okay, information only?
Make a motion to receive and file.
Support.
Move to support it, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
No, that's true. That's correct.
Oh, you were deprived. Get caught up here. New technology. I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Environmental and Public Works Committee meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you take the role?
Mr. McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Tomian?
Here.
Commissioner Bone, Commissioner Riley?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Greitob?
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Here.
At this time, I don't see any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So, support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Impose nay, motion carried. Do we have any citizens to be heard regarding environmental and public works matters? Saying none, we'll move on to updates. I see members from the St. Clair County Conservation District here for an update.
Good evening, Commissioners. Did everybody get the packet about six pages with them? If not, I did bring extras if you needed to look at it. What I wanted to come here tonight was to, just about a year ago, you guys approved some funding for the $15,000 over three years. We're kinda coming to a close on that first year. And I kinda wanna, you know, give you guys an idea of what we're doing with the money and how else the Conservation District continues to build itself back up. So in that packet, I kinda spelled it out. I just wanna kinda touch upon a few highlights here to give you that, some information about it. To begin with, we began that NRCS, the Farm Bill Technician Grant. That began October 1st with a partnership of St. Clair County, Macomb County, and as well as the USDA's NRCS program. And of course, the Santa Lake Conservation and St. Clair, they formed that partnership. And they also contributed as well. So when we got that grant up and running, there was a short Farm Bill, and it's called Environmental Quality Incentives Program. There was a short signup period that began in December. And the period of signup lasts for about two months. And between the NRCS District Conservationists and this new person that we, Megan, she couldn't be here tonight, they were able to come up with 18 conservation plans, totaling, you know, over $500,000 of potential cost share for conservation work amongst the agricultural land in St. Clair County. And through the process, about half of those got funded. And those plans that were funded totaled about $130,000. And then through the course of the winter and then leading up to about this point, because we know there'll be a funding cycle again here in December or so, they have met with roughly, well, probably more than 25 farms, but they were able to put 25 plans together. That probably, they had to meet with 40 or 50 different producers in the area. Some are interested, some are not. But they have, you know, potentially another $726,000. We don't know exactly how many will get picked for funding at this point. But there is the potential, or the future potential, for those conservation plans to be funded. And we have some pictures there of some of the progress being made with some of the contracts that are out there. We have a grassed waterway being put in. And we have a high tunnel that's, you know, creating, you know, vegetables for a longer season. So that's kind of, you know, the program that you guys are helping support. That's where we're at. The minimal, you know, expense to the county, I think, is reaping some great rewards. The partnership that we have with the district is, now, the other thing is, this is half. Macomb has about the same amount of numbers as well with theirs. So you could, for a full-time position, you could really take and double these numbers. We did receive to the State of Michigan a Wildlife Biologist Grant. I sent an email off stating, you know, I've found there's several hunt clubs in this area, several non-farming landowners would have bigger chunks, 10, 20, 40 acres. And they look for other options to do with their land. So I've kinda reasoned that out. And then through the course of the year, we've been able to secure a Wildlife Biologist to go help promote Farm Bill programs or work with different, for habitat work and different, you know, you know, to help advise people how to bring around their land to get to their, what they're wanting to with wildlife. One thing we could, we've thought about that is utilizing that to help combat invasive species that's on a lot of the private lands as well. So that's something, we're actually, we're in the process of hiring that Farm Bill biologist right now, or Wildlife Biologist. Hopefully here in October, they will be on hand, working. It'll be Santa Lake County, St. Clair County, and Lapeer County is the primary counties. We continue to work with the Michigan Agriculture and Environmental Assurance Program. That's a grant that we have with the State of Michigan as well. That's shared between Santa Lake and St. Clair Counties. These are some St. Clair County numbers on their own. In this particular year, there was 20 new verifications between either improvement to a farmstead, or their cropping system, or they implement nutrient management, or do some erosion controls. Or even livestock is the other one, where they're trying to, you know, reduce the effects to the environment through, you know, produce through livestock. So we're making some good progress there. And to date, we've gotten, you know, 46 different verifications in St. Clair County. That technician as well, he does work close with the state with their right to farm. And once in a while, we have to go out and we, you know, deal directly with some right to farm complaints as well. So he's worked with three of those in St. Clair County this year. Through the meat program itself, there's always trying to invent new ways to create awareness. Farm Bureau, the St. Clair County Farm Bureau received a grant to host a meat meeting. And we get through the district, through Santa Lake or St. Clair, we've hosted several of them. And you get 20 different people usually at a time. It's like, well, how, they had a certain amount of money to spend. And we were just like, well, how do you really get that to go? And then to also bring the ag producers to understand water quality. So what we put together was, we ended up running the Here on Lady for an evening and did a water quality river cruise. We ended up with about 80 producers on there, or probably 40 farms being represented between husband and wife. And we went out, we had some presenters. We had Michelle Seltzer from the Office of the Great Lakes talking about. And I asked her to kinda correlate, you know, we're going out on the Black River. You can see where kinda the sediment reaches to the St. Clair River. It's a good contrast right there. So if somebody that's maybe over in K-PAC, we can try to bring that realization of what happens, you know, on the Great Lakes. And then also make it a, you know, kind of a fun event. So that turned out very successful. We did have Bill Parkes as well from SEMCOG come talk. And we had him talk about the need to create partnerships with the ag community to come to better water quality. So that was a successful event. We had the Michigan Farm Bureau President on as well there, along with State Representative Dan Lowers. Oh, through the course of the year, the Metropolitan Planning Commission contacted us. And they're trying to begin the Farmland Preservation Program again. And unfortunately, I did not be able to, could not make last night's meeting that they had. So I'm not sure where that was at. At the first meeting I went to, they were wondering, there is an easement on a farm out, I think in the Emmett area. And they were wondering about who could monitor that for building and, or development and so forth. And I said, you know, the district is out and about driving around anyways. I says, that's just like a single annual report that the Commissioners need, I believe. I says, we could go take pictures and develop a small report that it's staying in compliance with the development rights. But I don't know where, I missed last night's meeting, so I'm not sure where that is at. But we did step forward and offer that service. As I just mentioned earlier, we're getting more involved with SEMCOG. They have, when we did the Farm Bill Technician, that kinda brought us into partnership with Macomb County. SEMCOG is really trying to build a partnership to combat invasive species, particularly fragmities around Lake St. Clair. So we're getting more involved with that and trying to figure out how can we play a role of coordinating efforts in doing some of this conservation work. We do go to a lot of, I've been to a lot of meetings where each unit of government wants to do something on lands that they own. But I feel like, you know, if the road's spraying the ditch, but they're not getting beyond onto the private land, and it's just gonna come back. So I'm hoping that we can somehow step in and get enrolled in some programs, maybe through Farm Bill, to eradicate, you know, invasive species on private lands as well. And then rehabitat that with, you know, something more native. So that's kind of a work in progress. And another work in progress is we're working with SEMCOG and the Health Department. They're wanting to implement the Bell River Watershed Management Plan. And a lot of that entails agricultural role community. And we have the technical expertise and possibly could tap into the Farm Bill programs to help implement some of those suggested watershed practices that are needed there to better the Bell River. The district did have a tree sale this spring. It was very successful, as it has been in the past. When I order trees, I just kinda go off of what we sold in the previous years. Things sold differently this year, so I had quite a few trees left over of different sizes. So I worked with, the Drain Commissioner has a lot of that property they're developing, as well as the park. So I kinda donated trees in different, to those two different departments, to, you know, what I had left over to, you know, get those planted. And they're very appreciative of that. And then also with the Drain Commission, there was a program sponsored through the Gas Company in Michigan National, in Michigan International Speedway. Bob Wiley, he, I said, I can have this funding to pay for some trees, but I don't have the time, because right during our tree sale, I said, I don't really have the time to put the group of people together to plant it. So I've supplied him with the trees to do it. And he had the volunteers come out and do it. And that was funded through some private companies. And then, kinda lastly, we did have, through the guidelines of the State of Michigan, we needed to hold an election, a director's election again. And many of the old directors chose not to rerun. So we were tasked with, you know, finding new directors and getting them elected. So we did hold the Director's Open House and Election. And if you went back to the front, there is a brand-new board that we're starting to work with and educating them. And Charlie stayed on, he's the chairman now. And Charlie stayed on, he's the chairman now. And then Mark Naplin ran, and Mike Schuler, Jeff Reed, and Scott Lamb. They all chose to be part of the organization and see where we go with it in the future. So does anybody have any questions for me, or?
Commissioner Greata.
You were talking about the invasive species and the fragmities, and you're working with SEMCOG trying to find a way to deal with that particular stuff. Have you guys reached out to Clay Township at all? Chuck Miller and Bob Williams and the people over there that deal with that stuff on a regular basis?
They have been at those meetings. Are they from Harson's Island, I'm thinking?
Yep.
They have been actively at those meetings. There was actually a grant proposal put together that was declined the first time.
And added for yours, they're really foremost in how to deal with that stuff.
Yes.
Another one that you might contact would be Jim Darling at the St. Clair Flats DNR office. I was at his place today, and we were doing some looking out there. And he has found a way to control fragmities with water control.
Yep.
And how he does that stuff. So if you guys aren't in tune to that stuff, there's another direction that you may want to go.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Rushing.
Right, I'm doing a, specifically about the Bell River Watershed, because that's pretty much entirely within my district. Bell River doesn't start until Miller Road. Prior to that, it's just a county drain from there to Lapeer. And that's where the river actually starts. You mentioned earlier, you're working with SEMCOG. With the agricultural best practices, do you have any partnerships with any farmers along St. Clair County as far as what they're doing to protect the Bell River Watershed? That's what you mentioned you're potentially to do.
Yeah, probably, who would be better off to answer it if I had Megan here? She's the technician to where I'm bouncing between counties, so I, I don't personally get out to each farm. Or I wish Christina from the NRCS would be.
Okay, maybe next time, but then.
She's actively involved with SEMCOG as well, because we're trying to utilize the, you know, federal money.
And talk with Bob Wiley, he's very knowledgeable. And my understanding, Bell River is not an abitable, never has been. Some rivers have been historically logging rivers. He hasn't been able to find anything that documents it, which would really assist in trying to clean out any trees or anything along the area. It really helps out with the funding and trying to get it. But if it wasn't an abitable river, you'd, it really limits your rights on that river. Just didn't know if you might, I mean.
I, I don't know.
Any other questions? Seeing none, Joe, Charlie, thank you. I, I look at what you're doing on a shoestring budget. And we came really close to passing that millage for you.
Yeah.
Here several years ago. And, but it's nice to see all of the wonderful things that you're doing on a shoestring budget.
Well, we're finding different ways to make it work. Like I said, it's kind of pooling the administrative resources. And it's working, it looks like the state too, some funding is loosening up because of, you know, we received a biologist position because it's proving successful to.
The part that I experienced over the last few years is that, in some instances, if you have a grant request that you're submitting, the expectation is there's some kind of a local match. And if you don't have money for a local match, you get passed over and go somewhere else. Which is really unfortunate. That's the way they've kind of set some things up, and we just have to, to deal with it. But I appreciate you coming and giving your report.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item. We have conceptual initiatives. Any, well, wait, before we get into any updates from commissioners regarding environmental public works matters. Seeing none, we'll go to conceptual initiative from administration, the landfill fee waiver procedure.
This month, I have two issues to cover under conceptual initiatives. This is the first one tonight. We do get requests from time to time that we either waive or reduce fees out at the landfill. Quite often, they're from nonprofit agencies, they might be from local units of government. They're also from county departments that are doing some work. We really have no set procedures or guidelines on when we would grant such a request and when we wouldn't. We have been asked by the landfill to put together some type of procedures that would enable them to uniformly make their decisions on what would be approved and what wouldn't be approved. In the past five years, I asked Matt and his staff to put together a list of the types of requests that they've received and what type, what the amount of waivers or cost reductions they've granted. Most of them go towards county and local community projects, such as adopt the highway, adopt a highway program, special events that communities may have, special cleanups like the St. John's Marsh cleanup is one example. And they will ask the landfill to waive their fees. Over the last five years, the amount that has been waived annually has been relatively small, anywhere between about $10,000 and $19,000 a year. But certainly putting together some type of procedures that his staff can use as they receive those would be important. What we're trying to do in developing these is to preserve the ability to negotiate special rates for desirable types of waste that come out there, or unique wastes that come out there. There are certain types of wastes that come out that we may ask them to pay a little bit more. Or in some cases, depending what it is, we ask them to pay a little bit less. So we want to preserve the right to do that as well. And certainly, we want to ensure that we're not violating any limits on the use of, of public assets to the benefit of someone privately. So the procedural guidelines that we'll be using or developing will certainly run by Corporation Council to make sure that we're preserving the public trust and interests in that facility. We're going to focus primarily on publicly funded projects that would be approved for waivers or reductions. There could be programs as well that address community development issues, public safety issues, and public health issues as well. So as we develop these, we'll share a little bit more information with you. Certainly provide Corporation Council with an opportunity to review and comment on the final draft that we come up with. And then we will present them to you for you to take a look at as well.
Okay, any questions for Bell? Seeing none, thank you. We have no old business, we'll move on to new business. Item A, the Blue Water River Wetlands Contract Change Order. See, that's for, the change order is for $221,366. Did I get that right?
That's the total, but that's not the change.
Twenty-nine, eight, eighty-seven.
I'll make most, we forward that to the full board.
And the amount, support?
Twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred, eighty-seven dollars.
Okay.
Eleven percent increase.
Support.
Okay, we have moved and supported. Any discussion? That is within the grant to cover it. So having said that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is the Resolution 1519, Pledge of Full Faith and Credit for the Drain Bond, for the Lester-Bramell Drain Bond.
I make a motion, and we send this on to the full board.
Support.
And we have a, a support. Do you want to go ahead?
Sure. Hey, good evening, on behalf of the infamous.
Drain Commissioner Wiley, but go ahead.
That's right, on behalf of the infamous Bob Wiley, I'm Eric Isaacson. I'm the project manager at the Drain Commission office. Lester-Bramell Drain is approximately the king and plank, all the way down to the Shangri-La, to the outfall at the St. Clair River. Significant flooding going on there, you know, for repeated years significantly in 2011. We're looking for a project. The project tab is $995,000. Drain Office is simply requesting the county's pledge for full faith and credit for the sale of bonds for that drain project.
Okay, we've had a motion, any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
What's, what's the schedule of the project?
The schedule of the project is actually moving quite rapidly as far as, as most drain projects going. We've found a contractor, and we can break ground as early as October. Project to be complete by December of 2016.
Thank you. Commissioner Greata.
That, where that drain comes through Shangri-La and then crosses M-29 and kind of meanders around, there's a person that lives there where that property kind of goes, that drain kind of goes through their property. I built, I believe they have built some sort of a encasement around it, a brick display of sort, just to make it look a little bit nicer, if I'm looking in the right area. When you encounter something like that, what do you do when you come across something like that? Do you have to dismantle that? Do you then put it back together? Do you? Any thoughts?
Uh, you bet. Very, very complex situation down there. The primary emphasis of the project on the south end is the freighter waves actually traversing all the way up to M-29, causing definitive slumping of the slopes and sediment that needs to be carried out of there. What the Drain Office does is works closely with the engineer and the, and the contractor, communicating with the landowners for the preservation of trees, for landscaping. We do have the 40-foot easement on either side of the drain, but we do communicate with each and every landowner on an individual basis to make sure that their, their needs are met, and that they understand also, you know, what we need to get done.
Okay, I'm anticipating probably a phone call or two from somebody down that area when you guys start working there. I just want to know what's going to be happening, so I'll get in touch with your office.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carried.
Thank you.
The, I see Matt here for the landfill gas expansion contractor recommendations.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we send this on to the full board.
Good evening, Commissioners. Before you is a memorandum that is recommending Talaski Excavating LLC to be the primary contractor for our seventh, I'm sorry, our sixth expansion to our gas collection system on the landfill. As we build out sections of the landfill, it's, it's quite important to install gas collection capability in those new areas as we move along, particularly now that we have a gas-to-energy plant that we're supplying fuel to for the purpose of creating renewable electricity. Talaski Excavating actually did the expansion that we conducted last year. They won the award for the same type of project. This one is slightly larger in scope. We have six vertical gas wells, as opposed to five that we put in last year. These are a little bit deeper because the area of waste is a bit deeper. So hopefully, we have a little bit better hopes for more gas to be collected. Talaski's price, I believe, was about $124,000 and change, about 15% less than the second lowest bidder. We had no issues with the work that was done last year. Their subcontractor for the drilling of the vertical gas wells is highly experienced and has done hundreds of projects in Michigan. So I have full faith and confidence in the ability of Talaski and their subcontractor to execute the project. And I ask for your recommendation to the full board.
Okay, I would entertain a motion this time.
We have one.
We have a motion, and that's to Talaski Excavating for $124,494. Any questions for Matt? Well, thank you, Matt. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carried.
Thank you.
The landfill activities report.
Mr. Chairman? Yes. I move that they be received and filed.
Okay. Been moved and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carried. Any other environmental or public works matters? Seeing none, we'll move on to information only. We have the Park and Recreation Commission's financial documents. We have the MS-HDA Notice of Grant Fund Recapture, and the Coastal Zone Management Program Grant Determination. I would entertain a motion that they be received and filed.
So moved and supported.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. And last, receive and file packets regarding environmental public works matters.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn, sir.
We have a motion to adjourn, it's been supported. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
At this time, I'd like to call the Ways and Means Committee to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Tamian?
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Here.
Commissioner Bohm?
Commissioner O'Reilly?
Here.
Commissioner Greata?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here. Okay, moving on to number two. Can I have a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved. Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. This time, moving to citizens to be heard. Seeing none, we will move to updates. Do we have any updates? Okay, we'll move on to conceptual initiatives. Our administrator has something for us.
Yes, thank you. Annually, the county creates its community report card. Most of you have seen them over the years. I've asked Chris to make some copies of those report cards from 2011 through 2015, if you're interested in them. We can certainly send them to you electronically as well. And many of these are out on the county's website also. But one of the reasons that we do that is, is to track progress in how we're improving the community's position. We take a look at certain key indicators related to people, to place, and prosperity. And we had a little bit of discussion about information contained in these report cards earlier when Commissioner Tamian was speaking on behalf of the Health Department's request today. It also allows us to not only take a look at how well we're doing in improving the conditions of the community, but also to take a look at how we compare to our neighboring communities through, throughout the thumb, as well as southeastern Michigan. And that's generally the area that we compete for residents, as well as economic growth with. So we certainly want to look at how we are doing to ensure that we can remain competitive. We've made some very significant progress over the years since we've been tracking this data. We certainly have improved the place that all of us live and raise our families. Many of those trends and indicators are pointing towards the positive, and that's great. Opportunities for employment and personal wealth have been improving to an extent as well. There are other areas, however, within that report card and those community indicators that are not improving. They're, they're holding fast, or we are seeing negative trends developing. One of them includes resident health indicators, you know, poverty rates, as well as personal health. And the strategy that was presented to you today by the Health Department is designed to begin to turn those trends around. The other area that we're seeing that we're either staying stable or actually losing ground is in resident and workforce education and skills. When we look at the education level of our workforce, we're consistently below the regional average. We have seen little improvements in that trend throughout this decade. Average monthly wages, again, we're consistently below the regional averages. And we have also seen little improvement since the beginning of this decade. When we look at personal income per capita, again, we are consistently below the regional average. And once again, little improvement over the last half of this decade. Median household income is also consistently below the regional average. And actually, with respect to median household income, we are seeing a trend towards the negative. Our median household income over the last five years has actually been declining. Certainly not something we'd like to see. certainly not something we'd like to see. And finally, when we look at our workforce and our aging workforce, you know, we are all getting older. The population of St. Clair County is getting older. The percentage of our workforce in the younger age groups, primarily those 25 to 34 years of age, the age group that generally starts family, develops roots within a community, begins participating in activities in the community and giving back. We are seeing the percentage of our workforce in that age group has been declining as well and it is expected to continue to decline. We actually have the lowest percentage of our workforce in that age group of any county within our region. These are all issues that if they are not addressed, will not lead to a brighter tomorrow for St. Clair County. Our ability to see our children and our neighbors improve their lives, attract new residents and encourage private investment depends on these trends reversing. What you see before you tonight from the Health Department begins to address the health of our workforce and our residents. The next step is to develop a strategy that addresses our skill levels of our residents and our workforce. That will translate to changes in personal wealth as well as personal health. Over the next few months, I'll be working with a number of community leaders to begin identifying potential strategies that can make a difference in our community. I just want to put you on notice that we will be working on this with other community leaders and will certainly be reporting back to you in the next couple of months.
Go ahead, Bill.
Bill, you've mentioned that many times we're below average for the region. What is the region?
The region consists of, we take a look at Genesee County, Lapeer, McComb, Oakland, Santa Lac and Wayne County. That is where our people go to work and that's where we attract workers from. So we've determined those are the communities that we're interested in ensuring that we may remain competitive with.
Obviously then Oakland County could skew it one way, a different county might skew it a different way, but we still are falling below average.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Well, you and I talked a bit earlier today on this and thought about it. And at every school district, you're going to have somebody look at that. But I look at K-PAC where I graduated from and the amount of students there have dropped. And I believe that's true with every school district within St. Clair County. So trying to retain a younger crowd, St. Clair County is getting older, population's declining. That's just people having less kids. Algonac has closed, I believe, two schools and they consolidated. But I believe that's happening in East Chinatownship too, there are just less students. Said in 1973, when I graduated, there's less students in the school district now than there was in 1973. So just want to get some information on that because if we're going to try to retain the youth, there are just less of them there to try to retain also. So we need to look at that too. Any other questions? All right. Don't believe we need a motion for that, so we will move on to old business. Moving on to 7A, Manning Table Adjustment Request, Prosecuting Attorney.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the Manning Table Adjustment Request from the prosecuting attorney for, was it a witness coordinator?
Yeah.
Be forwarded to the full board for action.
I support that.
We have any comments? If you look at that, evidently this person that's named here is doing an excellent job and it's really going to greatly assist. I did talk to Kerry and it will actually be a reduction in the, he's got it covered in his budget. So it's going to be a reduction in actual costs and benefit services for the county. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Moving on to 7B, Veterans Affairs Manning Table Revision Request.
Good evening, Commissioners. With the Manning Request, what I'm looking at is right now, we've been, for the last two years, we're sharing Outreach Coordinator with the Health Department. Of course, as I, maybe in the paper you might have seen it, basically our outreach is really what makes us a benefit for the veterans. They gotta, they have to know that we're out here. It's been one of my biggest pushes and my goals throughout when I came in here in December is to let veterans know that we are here and that the benefits are there for them to, you know, hopefully take advantage of, but we can't help them unless they get into the office. So the Outreach Coordinator, what we'd like to do is we'd like to make that a full-time position in the Veterans Affairs, which as you can see, right now, our budget will support that. We have that money in there. So we'd be able to bring on a full-time, I believe it would end up additionally probably around $30,000, a little over $30,000 additional to what we're already, we're already paying for the last two years. So I just, I think that's going to be a huge benefit for us because right now we could have actually somebody focus in every day and actually not only just start the projects and kind of get, just make them happen, we can actually have a lot of follow-through and somebody to actually consistently be working on projects and working on future projects to outreach to our veterans and get them into our office.
Do we have any questions?
I don't really have a question. I support this initiative, but I'd just like to take this opportunity to recognize Chris, Bill Greitap and Bill Kaufman. Last Sunday, we had an article in Times Herald about Veterans Benefits and what's going on and where our Veterans Office has gone in the last year and talked about trends. The trends in that office are up significantly and I, for one, am very pleased with the services that we're providing and this kind of proactive management is exactly what we need.
Can I have a motion for this full board?
I so moved.
Support.
Just a quick question, where, administration stands on this? Did, have you looked at this and reviewed it?
Yes, Chris has spoken and worked with Kerry on this as well as with our HR department.
Okay, so you believe it or not?
Yes, if you recall, the Veterans Affairs Office is funded by a special millage.
Correct.
If you take a look at their budget to actual and you look at their wages, which Chris has provided you a copy of their budget to actual in your agenda packet, for me, it's page number 10, I have no idea where it shows up on your...
Yeah, it is.
But certainly the funds are there to support the position, so it would be budget neutral.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay, moving on to 7C, Medicare Advantage Renewal, and this is for final action.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that the Medicare Advantage Renewal be approved?
For final action.
For final action.
I would second that.
Do we have any discussion? And Bill?
We have brought in our healthcare consultant who assisted us in going out for bids on healthcare as well as our renewal for Medicare Advantage, Dan Skyver from Brown and Brown. You had a number of questions when we met down in Algonac and we thought it would be helpful to bring Mr. Skyver here to answer any of those questions, review what he has done for us and what some of those results may be. So if you have any questions, but I'm sure Dan has some comments he'd like to make first.
Hoffman, give us a quick rundown because I do have a question.
Sure, well, you have the Medicare Advantage, and I know we've provided quite a bit of background information on that, that what we did in 2013, we pulled your Medicare-eligible retirees out of your self-funded plan and put them in a fully insured Medicare Advantage Plan. We did a full market bid at that time and Blue Cross came in with the lowest price, so they were pulled into that plan. Looking at your rates today, if they were still in your self-funded plan, the rate for a Medicare-eligible individual would be $550 a month versus the rate you see in your Medicare Advantage Plan. So it certainly has paid significant dividends by moving them. Now, the reason for the savings are it's all, they're in a Medicare Part A and B and a Medicare Part D plan and everything's rolled into one and Blue Cross is receiving a fee from CMS, Center for Medicaid Services, to act as Medicare. So it's highly subsidized by federal government, highly regulated, but it has been very cost-effective. There's much more I can add to that, the renewal's 9.9% so...
What is part, you said part E?
Part D.
Oh, okay.
Part D, yes.
Okay, I thought you said E.
The prescription drug plan, correct. So if there's any questions, I can answer on that part of it, I'll be happy to.
Just, what's the main, how did this increase happen? I'm assuming it might potentially have been associated with the Affordable Care Act.
No, Medicare Advantage Plans actually are regulated by CMS and they sit outside of the Affordable Care Act. The only thing that does impact them, there's a tax in that plan that's part of the Affordable Care Act. There's a federal insurance premium tax that is assessed on this plan. Now, that's the only tax that's assessed on this plan. There's four other taxes that are subject to your self-funded plan. Interestingly enough, the federal premium tax only applies to insured products, so you don't pay it on your self-funded plan for your active and early retirees. Other than that, all of the regulations follow the guidelines by CMS, so...
I just thought that was important to where there isn't any misconception of how this is being cracking.
Yep.
Do we have any other questions? Do we need a roll call vote? Roll call, please.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Tamian?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitap?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay, we'll move on to other Ways and Means Matters. Do we have any? Moving on to information only.
Motion to receive and file packets?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn, sir.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Stand adjourned.